We don't have a flag, but we gonna pretend like we have one for the pleasure of Jesus. Heavenly Father, as I come to this day, Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you have poured upon us. Lord, thank you for waking us up this morning and letting us see another day. And now, Lord, as we go into this agenda, Lord, I pray that you open our minds and strengthen our hearts that we make good decisions. As I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our prayers are Jesus.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it? Now, we have a real call. Councilman Dan Smith.
Hello?
Councilwoman Michelle McColl, Vice Mayor Nicole Weigans, and Mayor Brown.
The town attorney, Wesley Fardus, here also.
Okay, on this agenda, this is a special meeting, and on only this agenda, we only could discuss the three items that's on here. And the first item that we are going to discuss is about the signatures of the financial, finances. So, um, I need to, to bring, and I had to ask them what was the procedures to get our name put on the signature cards? So, um, we have to remove the three previous people that's up there, which is the mayor, the vice mayor, and Rayvahn. And, um, we have to elect three more people, which will be the mayor and the vice mayor. So, with that said, um, I need a motion to re, to remove the other three, 'cause we have to, I have to show proof that we moved, we removed them from the signature card.
Can we move to discuss?
Sure.
Why aren't we removing Ray?
Because, um, the way I see it, um, I talked with Mr. Powell today, and he was saying like, even though Ray is, um, the, the utility guy, he shouldn't be doing, um, town, having town things for the credit card. It should be council members only. Um, I know in the past, that, um, when I was on the council, we never had a, a employee to handle credit cards. That was been the mayor, the vice mayor, and a council member.
Isn't he a department head? He's not just an employee?
Yes, he is, but he still work for the town. He's still a town employee.
Clarifying, um, so you wanna remove Jackie, Anita, and Rayvahn from the signature cards, but you also wanna take away Rayvahn's ability for credit card? Or debit card, or whatever it is?
You know, what he, what, what's going to happen is that when we get everything cleared up, 'cause we really don't know how much money we have.
Yes.
We don't even know what our budget look like. Okay? Until we get things straightened out, we can always add him back on later, if that's what you all wanna do. But right now, we just need a clean slate, and we need to go ahead and add the mayor and vice mayor, and later on, we can add somebody else.
Another clarification? So for the signature cards, the only ones that'll be able to sign any check are the mayor and vice mayor, is that correct?
Right. Right now...
How many signatures are required?
Well, from my previous experience, we had three. But right now, um, if the council won't want a third person now, we could, um, make a motion and vote on who we want to be the third person.
I mean, I would like to make a motion to amend to leave Ray on the account.
Do you have a motion? Can I hear a second?
Ah, wait, I think we need to finish the discussion before we make a motion to vote on anything, because it's still questions that I have, and I'm not ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, when we do the signatures, aren't we supposed to change it through a resolution? We didn't have to?
No. She didn't, they didn't ask for one. They just watched the minutes from this meeting right here to bring to them the show that we took out three people names, and we added two people names.
That's one question I have.
So...
Okay, so then, I motion to amend? To motion to remove Ray?
Can I hear a second?
There's no second?
Motion died. There's one second on that.
Who is going to be the one doing the che, writing the checks? Since Vanessa's not in, nor I. Okay, when Vanessa left, who did she appoint as the authority?
I don't know.
Vanessa's still here.
Yeah, she stay up here.
But she's still here?
Yes.
Okay, no, I thought she took a leave of absence or something of that nature. And even when you take a leave of absence, if you go by the charter, she has to appoint a person to... She has to designate somehow a town employee or an official to take her place during her absence. If she...
Well, it wasn't that well discussed with me and Robert.
No, that's a charter. That she has to designate someone, um, for that part. And we need to go by the town charter to the chief. So we don't get in the same situation that they were in, because in the beginning, this is how they started, making the changes, doing the subtle things until they got out of there.
Okay, I understand that. Um... Chief, well, I can't really discuss that right now, because I don't know. I really don't even know. I miss what's going on with her.
No one has spoken with her?
No.
Mrs. Wesley, have you spoken with Vanessa?
Outside of the, the letter that she provided that I forwarded to all of you, I don't have any further clarification on it.
So therefore, you know...
Okay, so what do you advise us, um, so we must stay within the charter?
Currently, um, Shay, the bookkeeper, you have a bookkeeper. She's on?
That was Shay, the bookkeeper.
Shay.
Don Shay.
Don Shay.
She's the bookkeeper. She's the one who grabs the checks currently, so...
Is she on?
No, she's still here.
She's still here. So you do have a bookkeeper, um, but as far as I know, what she's on is she's taking some lead days until further actions taken by the council in regards to her report. But that's all I know. So technically, she's still employed. And technically, she still has the signature.
She would be able to do the check, and she'll be able to be one of the signers in case the absentee's of one of us?
She's currently is one of the signers.
Don Shay?
No, um, Vanessa.
Oh, Vanessa.
Yeah, so Vanessa, Rayvahn, mayor and vice mayor are the current signatories on the account.
So would it, that, Don Shay is the one that will be doing the checks? Would it be appropriate for her to be the third signature in case of the act? So if neither of us are available, and you take Ray off, then how are the checks going to be signed? You still need that third person?
That's why I'm asking the council now, from out of us four, who would y'all like to be the third person? I know in the charter, it states two people.
But you have the third, Jason K.
Right, in my past, we almost had three people. And I was one of the third person to sign all of them checks when the mayor and the vice mayor wasn't able to do it. I was that other person.
Everyone's looking at me. I mean, I can do it if you guys need me to. And then count ninety percent of the day.
You're welcome. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Well, I move that we add, remove Rayvahn as a signer for town checks and add Robert Gansley.
A second?
Okay, he has the motion and second. Then remove Rayvahn from the, um, signee and add Robert Gansley. Ready for the question?
I have none.
Is he gonna, is Rayvahn gonna need, um, anything that he has to get for the stuff he does?
That doesn't affect his job. It just affects his signing ability to sign paychecks and checks that you have to pay out.
So he can still do his job?
Yeah, he will still do his job. He will still have access to the funds that he would normally have access to.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. McColl?
I sit down.
On interposed, okay, Robert Gansley will be the third person to sign. We also have to, um, make a motion for the mayor and the vice mayor to be removed from that signature card also. And we have to specify...
Do I need to make an amendment to that first one, or just let that go and just do a new?
You could do a separate motion for, for just this part.
Alright. I, I move that we remove Anita Rivers and Japola Williams from the powers to sign checks for the town and add the vice mayor Nicole Weigans and mayor Tommy Brown.
I second the motion.
Okay, he has the motion and second. That remove, um, Anita Rivers and Japola Weigans on the signee card, um, for signatures, and, um, add Mayor Brown and Vice Mayor Weigans. Um, ready for question?
Question?
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Interposed? Okay, ayes ayes. Will be removed. Okay, the next, the next one that's on the agenda is, um, consider a town attorney. Um, I have been, um, speaking with, um, Florida League of Cities. I have not had a definite answer. They are trying to work with us on that behalf. So until I hear back from them, they'll let me know what we can do about it in a second.
Wouldn't we have to do the RFPs for those?
Uh, I don't know, 'cause I have not heard back from them yet.
Is that not how that's supposed to be? You do the RFPs and these policies?
So we have, um...
It's a request for...
Procurement and purchasing policies. These procurement and purchasing policies mostly run through the town clerk and the town manager, which is obviously a bit of a problem now. We can, in an emergency, do a limited competition acquisition with a bid waiver that would allow us to get quotes directly to consideration. So, we may wanna consider doing that for this or for the town clerk. But at this point, if we don't have these people, I mean, it's kind of just an academic exercise. So, in case you all haven't heard, Leslie has put in her resignation. So, what was your last date, June sixth?
Twenty-four.
Oh, June twenty-fourth. So, we have probably at this point fifty-something days to find a new attorney. If we can get a town clerk sooner rather than later, we should be able to do a bid process for town attorney. If we can't do that, it would be a very terrible idea to run this town with no legal representation. So, that would constitute an immediate threat to the welfare of the community. So, if that's the case, we can enact an emergency purchase.
Well, as soon as I hear back from, um, Florida League of Cities, I will let y'all know. Hopefully, they will respond before our next council meeting, our first council meeting.
If we cannot get an attorney by then, would you stay on until we can get one? So we would not be without representation?
Uh. Okay. And then the next one, the last one, is, um, the consideration of a clerk position.
Ma'am, here, um, I've been thinking about that. Um, as far as like with a town clerk, would it be appropriate, um, since Sanithia is the only one in the office, and we need someone to do clerk duties, to temporarily promote her to town clerk? So she can handle the business at hand and get everything done, so we're not running blind without anybody in there, because her duties as a clerk, as a utility clerk is specific. There's only certain duties she can do. We need a clerk. She's more than qualified and have the education to run that office. So, my suggestion would be to promote Sanithia to, as our temporary town clerk, and if she chose that she might want to fill out for that position, then to allow her and to promote from then. Since she's there, she knows the day-to-day operations. No one has had issues with Sanithia, and she, she would be a good fit.
Gonna be interim town clerk, how long would her contract be?
Well, see, that'll be something that we would work on once she applies for the position, if she applies for the position. What I'm saying now is to today, so we can continue our business at hand, because there are a lot of things that we cannot do without clerk. We need a clerk yesterday. Not waiting for tomorrow, and if we, we need a clerk yesterday, she's qualified, she's in the office, promote her, tend to make, uh, make her an interim town clerk, and we advertise for the position, if she choose to apply for the position, then she goes through the process like everyone else.
But you would say that she don't wanna do?
I'm pretty sure she would do it.
I don't wanna put her in that position, and she's like, oh, no, I don't wanna do this.
I'm pretty sure she would do it.
Unless we didn't ask her if she wanna...
But right now, she can't do anything, um, because she doesn't have the authority to do anything but what she's doing. So if we vote on it today, she could always come back later and say, no, never mind, and we can move on. But for the time being, we should go ahead and make her an interim, since she's the only one in the office, her and Don Shay, so they can continue our business at hand, because we can't just stop. The town doesn't just stop because Audrey's gone. We still have things that has to be done now. And she's there, she's familiar. Um, that mean we doesn't, we don't have to go through trying to get somebody in there and train them right now. But off of her, I think we both can let her be the interim for now, so she can run the office as it needs to be ran without tying her hands. And if she wants the position, then let her apply, and we go from there. When you advertise for the open position.
We would need to interview her. We need to hold her against all of the criteria. We need somebody who's strong in RFPs. The town clerk runs our RFP process.
Right, and Sanithia is more than qualified. Sanithia has, she has a degree. She's been working and doing this type of work for over forty years.
But RFPs is a very specific process that I've done for about eight years professionally. There is nothing intuitive about it.
Uh, yeah.
It's strictly a knowledge instinct.
But this is just to keep the office running as an interim, and then you advertise for the position as we have to do anyway.
Okay, I understand.
And then she appoints for it, if that's what she wants to do.
I understand what you're saying.
But we don't hire clerk, the town manager would be the one that would hire the clerk. That's not even in our scope to do that. And remember, we have to follow this to the teeth, whether we like it or not. We have to go by the charter. Not personal opinions, not personal feelings. We have to go by the charter to the teeth. And anything else would be unacceptable, because that would make us just like the previous administration. So, this, this would be a bad egg on the issue until we can get somebody in to either apply for the position after it gets advertised or whatever. But somebody has to be there to do something. Has to be done. Sanithia is a, as a utility clerk, she can't do one nineteen requests. She can't do anything. Her length is limited to what she does, except water bills. Answer the phone. Um, if you don't have anyone in there, then what's gonna happen? She can't go do it, I can't go do it, you can't go do it. You can't, because that'd be overstepping your boundaries and your scope of your position. So, that is the most logical, to me, the most logical, um, the most logical idea for now, until we can get a town manager and a clerk. She's already there. She's already been trying to do, but it's only so what she can do with the position that she has. If we make her an interim clerk, then business can go on as usual. It's not like she has the power to do this, to do that. It's, it's just basically secretarial and clerical that she has to do, and it's not that hard to do. I mean, this is, I've done it in fourth grade, so I mean, uh, the system of town clerk.
Thing is, I, I don't wanna put somebody in that position, and it was like, well, y'all didn't ask me that I wanna do this. That's my main concern. I don't, I don't...
But she can always decline it later. We need to make a motion now while we're here.
But she's not here to, to say she wants to do that.
For the job, to want it and to prove that she can do the hardest parts of it.
That's for the permanent position. Interim means somebody who can step in temporarily to handle a job that needs to be done at hand. If you don't promote her, uh, how long do you think it's gonna take to get a town clerk, um, to advertise for a town clerk?
Well, I also talk to Allison, honey.
But if we don't, if we don't hire the town clerk, the manager hires the town clerk. Remember, we still have to go by the charter. We don't hire anybody but the town manager. That's the only position we hire as a county. That is the only position that we will hire for is a town manager. And that would be done on, as for their qualifications, experience, dah 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 dah, uh, on a score sheet.
Okay, but you're telling me that we can basically hire Sanithia as the town clerk?
The interim, because she's already in the office.
But promoting her to a town clerk would be...
Okay, so if we don't promote her, then what's gonna happen? You can't go run that office. You can't go do anything in that office. She can't go, I can't go, Cheryl can't go. So who's going to, who's going to do all these things that need to be done?
That's why we have emergencies.
Even with, by...
Coordinates. An emergency procurement.
Okay. Y'all, y'all are thinking too much into it. We're trying to solve an immediate problem. She's already there. She's already knowledgeable. She's been working this job for over six years and helping in the office. When we didn't have a clerk, she stepped in, her and Beverly Brazil. They ran the office as clerk, town manager, co together. Neither one was the boss of the other, but they ran that office until we hired a town clerk, a town manager and a clerk. So I don't see what the issue would be. It's not like we can't interview her. That's not her job. The job, the person who have to interview her would be whoever are town manager. It would be the, the town manager's job. But right now, the town manager's gone. She hasn't, she hasn't designated anyone, um, or appointed anyone to be up under her to handle the business of day-to-day operations. She has not been there. Our best interest in the town is to get someone in there now who's already knowledgeable that can come and do this.
So Leslie, the town council, do we have the power to hire an interim clerk in the absence of having a clerk, in the absence of having a functional town manager?
I would say, in a, this is an emergency situation. You need a clerk. You need a clerk to notice meetings, to write the minutes. I mean, just for some of the, even if it's just the more basic items, you need a clerk in place right now. Even if they had limited authority, um, to do just some of the more basic functions, you, you need an interim. Um, who that person is, you can always do a vote to, um, appoint this person as an interim clerk, pending their acceptance. Um, you've got two people who are in the office. I don't know their hours, but maybe you go with Sanithia, and then you go to, to Don Shay or something like that, and then maybe you do some type of quick, um, appeal to the public to see if someone can temporarily, it's an interim. So, a lot of times with interims, you don't have to meet the same requirements as you do for your permanent.
And can you have something like a weekly interim? What sort of, uh, period, period should you have for her?
It would be until either the town, town council makes another decision or a new, a permanent town clerk is hired. And it should probably, um, come with that her, I don't know what her pay is compared to the clerk pay, but that's another part that you have to consider in expanding her duties.
So would it make more sense to ask her about the job and then, let's say, call another emergency meeting? And then make her the town clerk, or you try to make her the town clerk?
I think you would do the motion with the conditional acceptance, that you would offer her the position as interim town clerk. And then that way, if she accepts it, then she's now the interim town clerk. If she doesn't, then back to the drawing board.
Why don't somebody just get on the phone and call her?
Are we in public? Public, are we in the public part of this? Can the public speak?
Yes.
At the mayor's request, uh, I have been in contact with the Florida League of Cities for both councils, manager and the clerk. The Clerks Association reached out. They're willing to help the ladies out of vacation until Monday. I could give the council an update on the possibility of a clerk, a temporary clerk, until they do the proper thing with a request, a proposal, and hire a clerk. Same thing with the manager. Uh, these are professional people with the league that I've known years and are very willing to help this town council.
Yes.
One thing we should, uh, keep in mind is that one of the findings in the audit was that Sanithia was issuing the bills and accounting for the checks that came in, and it was one person covering both jobs. They said they found nothing wrong with what she had done. She had done everything correctly. But that should have been two separate people doing that as a balance of the check. So if you are going to make her the interim clerk, make sure you don't get her back in that stuck position of having to beat both people again, because that's gonna be another audit finding.
If we move, if we vote to make her an interim town clerk, and Don Shay is there, Don Shay can do the utility part.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, but that's something... Yes ma'am, I understand that, but that's something you need to delineate. So you talk back to her trouble.
May I ask another question? I understand she's out on, uh, workers' comp right now.
Who, Sinethia?
Uh, yes, Ms. McCarry, Sinethia. And, uh, that's not a good position to be in when you're trying to fill the city.
She's the only one that's there now. She's the only one at town hall, um. I don't see what the issue is. I mean, she's already there, if you have to do an RFP, that means you're gonna have to pay out whatever it is that these people want as a salary. What is the cap for that? Because they're not gonna come all the way to White Springs just for this one utility money. When you already have somebody that's more than qualified that can do it, that's in-house.
But you also have to get her position also.
If you're changing her position, then she's only gonna be doing the job that you are now changing her to do.
But she's also on workers' comp, and we don't wanna turn it.
But she's on workers' comp and she's working. So that's not, that can't be an issue because she's still working on workers' comp.
I've been there twice in the last week and she's not there.
Yes, she has, I talked to her, I talked to her earlier today and I talked to her, I talked to her twice this week and she's been there, her and Don Che have been there.
Well.
And Tonda, you've been there and you've been here.
I've been there, I, this is my first time seeing her today, I didn't see her Monday and I wasn't there Tuesday. And, uh, um, she, she wasn't there yesterday, so this is my first day of seeing her.
So with her on workers' comp, so what does that mean now? That we no longer have a utility clerk either because she's on workers' comp?
That's correct, because.
No, I'm just asking.
No, she'd be illegal.
Because that means we're not gonna have anybody in the office as, uh,
That is for.
Today. So nobody's gonna be there because she's on workers' comp. But if she's all enough for her workers' comp and she's still working and is still there.
And she's, if she collects a single dime on workers' comp, she's illegal.
So is she, is she collecting?
Sounds like she's on a workers' comp, so she's not there. So that would basically just have her more money to not be there.
But you can have a work comp claim case that doesn't mean she's out of work.
Okay.
I mean, so if, just because she has a work comp claim doesn't mean that she's not allowed to work. It depends on what her status is. Is she out, you know, is, is workers' comp put her out and they're paying her to be out? Then of course that would be the issue. Um, but if she's not put out of work for her entry or whatever it might be, then she can work. It's not an issue. So just because she has the claim isn't the answer, we would have to know more.
Mm-hmm. You see, I don't know anything like that, she told me that today, she was on workers' comp.
Question. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions on this. So my understanding was, we would take a more pragmatic look at the clerk position. In other words, the full strategy of hiring a clerk, because what I'm hearing discussed is the bridge in strategy to cover until that time, which we haven't even talked about, how we're gonna plan to hire the clerk.
Right.
So if you go with interim position, you have no idea how long the interim position is gonna exist because we haven't even discussed your plan to hire a full-time clerk. Because I think Mr. Townsend has been acting as an advisor to assist in that. So I expected to hear the discussion around this is our plan to acquire a new clerk.
But we don't hire the clerk, the town manager hires the clerk, we're going by the charter.
Well, we don't do that.
Okay, which is all the more reason that it would make sense to ask her to go ahead and see if that would be something she's willing to do. You, we can't hire a town clerk. I don't care who sends who what, we can't hire them. Somebody can come yelp out, volunteer, whatever, but as far as hiring somebody, that's not in our scope of duty. The only person we can hire per the charter is a town manager. The town manager hires everybody else.
Yeah, that's true too. But Mr. Townsend just said that, um, we wish to.
Okay, but we still can't hire.
Until Monday.
Okay, Mr. Townsend, how does that go? If they send somebody here, how does that person get hired without the town manager?
I think you'd ask the town attorney that, I'm not an attorney.
They may have it at work. Because they're still going outside the charter.
Right, the only employee that the council hires is the manager. The council cannot hire any other employees. Now, in an emergency situation, to have someone as an interim, fill in certain duties, maybe not even all the duties, but certain duties to make sure the town is functioning. Um, I think that that is an obligation that the town council has, of course. But, um, the bigger question would involve how you're gonna get the town manager. And then once you get the town manager, then the question goes to fill in the position for the town clerk. So that, that would be the duty of the council, how do you get a new town manager?
Question again. Do we not have a town manager? That, that's a question.
Yes.
I think we do.
Okay, so if the town manager's job is to hire the clerk, you have a town manager. Who supervises and directs the town manager?
The council.
The council.
Okay. Can that not be done?
Is she not, can you read the letter from Vanessa to us so everybody will know what it says? So we can all have a clear understanding of what's going on?
Well, we, we really don't need to be discussing that.
Yeah, we do, because this is a comfortable room and every.
That, that's not where I wanted to go with it.
We're talking about hiring somebody or not hiring somebody, we don't know. As a whole, people are making decisions and nobody knows what exactly, what Vanessa's doing and the best way to find out is for her to go ahead and read the letter.
Okay, let's taper this until our next, um, town council meeting. So just May the thirteenth, and then we'll be to all have a clear understanding of what's going on.
Well, if she needs a letter, then we would know. It, it doesn't take that long to read Vanessa's letter. Then from her letter, we should maybe get her intention.
I'll read, I won't read the middle paragraph because of certain. "I'm reading to formally document a leave of absence from work due to the ongoing hostile work environment and the persistent disregard of our town's charter by the new council. I hope to return to work once these issues have been adequately addressed and measures have been put in place to ensure a safe and respectful working environment for all employees. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation."
So, I would like to taper this until we get our heads clear and, because I don't wanna jump into something and it comes back to bite us. So, I wanna taper this until we get a fully understanding how we're gonna go about getting a clerk. We already reached out to, uh, Florida League of Cities, Allison Payne, I talked with her. She's willing to help us out with the clerk.
But we cannot hire that clerk as a council, we cannot. We still have to follow the charter.
Florida League of Cities, Florida League of Cities could do that duty.
They can refer you somebody, Tonda, but they can't hire that person, and we cannot hire that person.
What if they volunteer? Line up candidates for the new town manager.
We cannot, oh, for the town manager. But you have to do the RFP for that.
If, not if it's an emergency.
Yeah.
If the town can't function for three months without it.
And you can't hire a town manager until we get rid of the town, the current town manager.
If it's an emergency, we don't have to go through RFP.
But you can't hire her.
Our town basically not functioning for three months while we do an RFP is not something that can be avoided.
Right, but we can't hire anybody until we get rid of her, right?
You can start it.
We can start the process, but I say in the words to hire, we have, she has to be home or at least on her way out so she can try who's ever coming in.
He has.
We're in the county too.
Again, I go back to the information I'm getting from the league. Right now we have twenty prospective interim town managers that the town council, according to charter, can hire while the manager is still in out of leave. They are waiting for this board to make a decision. You would have to compensate, but as the board, you have the authority to appoint an interim town manager anytime you wish. There would be a compensation packet for that, clerk does not. And I have two, the city has provided two prospective names that, at this point, I don't think the council's ready to consider because you'd have to do it in an open meeting. But just so that you know, to help us out there, it's lining up, these things take time.
So.
There it is.
So all of this information is being shared with everybody, with people. Is it gonna be available for the whole council? Because I'm hearing everybody's talking to this one, that one, the other one, everything should be in the sunshine. So whatever Robert knows, Tonda, myself, Cheryl should know. Whatever Tonda knows, we should know. If she, if somebody has talked to somebody, why do we have to wait when we should be all in a meeting? All the information should be out and open.
We have another question.
Correct, there's no, there's no, uh, there's nothing. The only person out, as a transition team member that I have spoken with and given the information off the lead to is councilwoman.
But why not everybody else? It's a council of course at the moment.
Because the council government is on show.
No, 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 he can talk to Tonda, Tonda can't talk to me about what, whatever. We can't discuss it, but as a transition team, since that's what it is, if you talk to Tonda, then you should give the rest of us the same courtesy so we would know what's going on too, so we don't be in the block. Because it's not fair for one person to know something and the rest of us don't.
Yes, councilwoman, you're correct.
So, I mean, we're no better than the rest if this is how we're gonna carry on.
We're putting together a plan to present to the entire board at your regularly scheduled meeting. That's all I'll comment on.
All right. We have a question.
Yes.
I'm the attorney, read the letter and it said something to the effect that the new, that the current town manager felt that the town, current new town council was not following the charter. What does she feel is in not complying?
You heard everything we heard.
Yeah.
I don't know. I haven't talked with her.
Okay, it's just like, she's saying that she, it's a hostile environment because the new council isn't following the charter. What is it being followed?
I don't know.
I don't even know what makes it a hostile work environment because I haven't had any inner access to it at all. And I, have y'all had any inner access? Robert, have you had any inner access?
Very little. I sent her a couple of questions about finances, which is what the charter says we're supposed to do, so.
Okay, thank you, so we don't really know what her reasons is.
No.
And I have a question. If we're supposed to compensate this person, we still don't have any information on what the availability of funding is to do that. So how can we make a decision?
Exactly. Because I don't even know what the budget is like. I don't know, you know?
I can read this one sentence. Um, there's a part of this I'm trying not to read because there may be hip up issues. So that's why we're being selective. Every member of this council has accused me in some form or another of corruption, theft, to being a crook and a large black woman whom they are afraid of with no evidence, rhyme, or reason. Otherwise, that's, that's what's here.
How does that go against the town charter?
That part is, that was more for the hostile work environment. The other part about the town charter not explained here.
Okay, thank you.
Tell it, what question?
Yes.
The town manager is on leave of absence for an indefinite period of time without a clear reasoning of when she might return. Is it possible, however, to hire an interim town manager for that period of time?
So we have a policy and procedures manual about taking leaves of absence that includes this situation. So this is basically an HR issue at this point within the charter. You guys get to watch me flip through papers, very lucky. Yeah, there is a provision here for termination, or for removal, I should say. On my, now. Sorry. I have four full binders of information. Imagine it's been quite a lot.
The charter?
The charter. It's the reason.
Three oh four?
Three oh four, removal. Town manager may be suspended by a resolution approved by the majority of the total membership of the town council, which shall set forth the reasons for suspension proposed removal. Copy of such resolution shall be served immediately upon the town manager by registered mail. The town manager shall have fifteen days in which to apply thereto in writing and upon request. Shall be afforded a public hearing, which shall be convened by the town council not earlier than ten days, no later than fifteen days after such hearing is requested. After the public hearing, if one is requested, and after full consideration, the town council by a four-fifths vote of its total membership may adopt the final resolution of removal. Town manager shall continue to receive full salary until the effective date of a filed resolution of removal. So if we were to attempt, sorry. So that's the process that we would have to use if we were to attempt to remove her with cause. This, what's going on now, if they can read, is a HR issue that has a prescribed course of action, if it's deemed illegitimate, that is not removal. So we could not really do that anyway, but this.
Okay. Um, we don't, we don't drop off from trying to get a clerk to a town manager, and I didn't wanna do that. But, uh, we need to stick to the last one of the town clerk position. And, uh, like I said, I was talking to Allison Payne. I don't wanna get too deep into that because we really don't know, uh, you know, the whole situation. We got one level and until we get some more classification on the town manager, I don't wanna discuss no more of that until our next town, um, town council meeting, which we made at thirteen. But, um, for the clerk position, you know, I did reach out to Allison and, um, I remember her from a long time ago, and she's willing to work with us and try and help us find a clerk. So we have to keep that in mind. But, um, I wanna taper this position about clerk until our next council meeting.
Wesley, is it possible to give specific functions to Sinethia? Like if we just need her to do our agendas, go to meetings, so the meetings can be all smoother? Is that something that we can give?
I think that's something you can ask her to do. I don't think it's maybe something you can tell her to do, if that makes a difference. You can ask her and see if she's willing to do it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I ask the attorney a question.
Yes.
The charter specifically spells out the duties of the town clerk. So if this body of elected officials chose to ask her only to do payroll or only to do accounts payable or only to do the minutes of the meetings, wouldn't that put them in violation of the charter?
In violation of the charter to, so for instance, somebody gets asked to schedule the library, somebody gets asked to do the agenda. These things are getting done, they have to be done, they have, the meetings have to be noticed. So is that a violation of the charter for us to get the bare minimum of the town business done? No, that's not a violation of the charter. To tell her she has to do those things, that would be. Now, when the current or the past clerk would be out, someone would do these functions, right? Somebody would do them. So to ask her to do. So to ask her to do them is, is fine. Isn't it down there?
You know, do we wanna have a special meeting next week? Like on, I guess, I'm not available Thursday, I missed a Thursday, but on, let's say Wednesday, like get a chance to talk to her, see if she's even interested in being the interim. Get the chance to talk to the League of Cities. And then from there, we can put together an action plan and say, okay, we're going to do either a emergency requisition of an interim town manager or whatever from the League of Cities, or we'll do some kind of competitive process based on having multiple people.
I mean, we've been waiting till May the thirteenth, they don't, we don't have to call a special meeting for that. We can wait for May the thirteenth and tell the people.
Who's gonna call the meeting then?
That's our standard meeting on the thirteenth.
I mean, we are getting ready to go into our first, um, council meeting, right? So all of that could be on our agenda to discuss that.
Who's gonna do the agenda? Who's gonna notice the meetings? Who's going to?
Well, I think doing this.
Yeah, but you can't do that, that's not your job.
Hey, we got to work together on this.
This is just how it started out the last time, with the previous council, the same way. This is what we're trying not to do.
I understand.
So if it has to be done, then we, okay, first of all, section three point oh three says in the absence or disability of the town manager, by letter, she should have designated a town officer to exercise the powers and perform the duties of a town manager during her absence or disability. But the town council can revoke that designation, but she didn't do it anyway. And we can appoint an officer of the town to serve until further notice. So until, Robert, are you here back from, um, the Florida League of Cities with these people that, um, are interested or can do the town manager's position? We need to do something now that can keep us running smoothly, so we don't have any issues. You have to remember, we still got all eyes on us. We're not out of the woods yet, just because they pulled the bill back. We have five to six months to get this town up, running, and running in the correct manner, following the town charter, which is the main thing they're gonna be looking for to see if this new council is going to follow the town charter. We can't, we can't sidestep, sidestep, because if you sidestep with one item, you're gonna find yourself later down the line, we're gonna do it with something else. We can't do that. We need to follow the charter, follow the charter to the teeth, whether we like it or not, that's what we need to do.
Madam Mayor, can I? So we can all have some clear information. It sounds like there is a transition team. Did I hear that correctly? That there is some transition team that has been created?
Yes.
Um, do we know who's on that transition team? And do they have a plan in place? Because I think that may help better inform the council of what is going on, or what next steps are prepared to take place.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, yes, attorney, yes, and we do have a plan. Uh, Mr. Allen, you dealt with myself, have been working together with this elected body prior to your election. Uh, our recommendation was strongly to go with the legal, uh, the Florida League of Cities, because they provide this assistance to municipalities. Some is a free offer, some is requiring compensation. But those are the professionals. And that who, that is who Mr. Mewdown and I have put the mayor in contact with, and several other council members in contact with. Uh, and have pretty much turned it over to the league because of the Florida sunshine law. Uh, but yes, there is a plan to work with these officials. We gave that to our, our city, uh, council. And that's what I recommend, um, that's what we have recommended too, to what Mr. Mewdown.
So what do we do in the meantime, until we get these people in place? The city can't just stop. I understand what the plan is with the Florida League of Cities. But Robert, you know, from being the town manager, the town doesn't stop because we don't have people in place. And we have to have somebody, no matter how temporary it is, you can say, okay, this is gonna be, um, you're, you're the interim until we get these people in place, and for the town manager, town clerk. But we have to have something in place now to, until that happens, whether it happens Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, or next month. But we have to have somebody that's able to follow these, to do these duties, to make sure that we're still running. People still have to be paid. Okay, Donna Shay can do that, because she's the bookkeeper. But what about all of the other little duties and the little small, small little items that have to be done on a day-to-day basis, that's not in Sunita or Donna Shay's scope? So, and we keep saying that she's on, uh, workman's comp, but she's still working. And I'm not saying, oh, we've been hiring Sunita, uh, she's gonna be this, she's gonna be that. No, I'm saying let her do these duties temporarily. But, and let her do them until the people that y'all have in place that, you know, that made a pocket in positions to come in and do it.
Okay, so what?
Until we get the help from the League of Cities, because it might be a week or so down the line. We might not hear anything from them, and them sending somebody, you know, they might call you Tuesday, Wednesday, say, okay, well, we got somebody that's gonna come, not gonna come till the twelfth or thirteenth, or something like that. What's gonna happen in between May the first and May the thirteenth?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, you're correct, it'll all, your, what your concerns and worries are, Councilman Williams. Uh, you were just elected, this body was elected Thursday, last week. This emergency meeting was called by the mayor because we were left with no check signers. It takes time. Those persons have reached out by emails and phone calls within days, within hours. They're willing to help. This will take a minimal time amount. They realize the situation you were in, they realize the situation the town is in. They will help. Now, can it be done tomorrow? Probably not. Uh, I, I just got the, the information today about the prospective town managers. Uh, so it will take a little time. In the meantime, this board needs to know that Mr. Powell does your, um, accounts payable. The payroll is done by the town, but Mr. Powell over, oversees that, to make sure it's correct and legal. So those things are carrying on. The day-to-day is a concern. But you just got elected, this, this isn't something that's been hanging out there for months. You have to give it a little time for these professionals to reach back out to the council.
I understand that. Okay, perfect example. I wanted to do a workshop, so we can, in the public, with all, with the, with the, um, citizens and everybody, to see, um, what is, what are our priorities, which, Tom, you have some of them listed, but we still have other things we have to do too. What are our priorities, um, what are the citizens, just a workshop, to see what the citizens think, what the citizens want, what they think our needs are to prioritize, you know, things with the citizens. Because I know some people, the audit is the main thing that they're, they're concentrating on. Some main focus is the fire department. But to hear from them, we have to call a workshop. It takes two council members to call a workshop or a meeting. And we don't have anybody to call a workshop with. Who are we gonna call to say, hey, we wanna have a workshop Tuesday? To hear from the citizens. How are we gonna do that? We can't do that, because we have nobody to call that can set the meeting up, notice it, and post it. So even if you don't make, um, her the interim, as, we have to have somebody that's gonna be able to do these minor details in case we wanna have a workshop or something. Because that's what we really wanted to have, was a workshop, but nobody was there to take the call, because Vanessa wasn't there, and it was out of Sunita's scope of duties. So what do we do in that situation?
Madam Vice Mayor, I, I don't think anybody in Dallas, United States, watching these for that matter, is gonna hold you accountable in this short period of time, if those things are not accomplished in this period of time. We give, I think we need to give it time.
All right.
So can we just table this?
Mm-hmm.
Until our meeting?
I motion to table this until our meeting on May thirteenth, so that we can do more research.
We have to say what it is, that we'll table it.
I motion to table item three, considered town clerk position, until our meeting on May thirteenth, so we may do more research.
Second.
Okay, yes, the motion is second, to table item three, the position of a clerk. Ready for the question?
No.
No question? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposes? No, okay, no opposes, okay. We, um, I understand it. We'll, we, this will be tabled for our next, um, council meeting, which is about May the thirteenth. Okay, everybody have any more questions? Okay, would somebody please make a motion?
Um, before we dismiss, for a meeting on the thirteenth, who's gonna do the agenda and the agenda packet?
Well, I'm trying to get that to people. We have to use what you got. We have to use what we have.
Oh, yes, you gotta have somebody doing the minutes and the recording, so.
Okay, right now, Rick Brown, it will be, uh, audit, auditor, au- auditor.
Video. Video. Okay, he would do the recording, so who's gonna take the minutes?
Uh, we, I, I'm working on it myself, trying to get someone to help me out with it. It will be done.
I was trying to.
I mean, if I, if I can also say, the same problem you're gonna have on May thirteenth meeting, you're gonna have in any other meeting you have in between now and then. Nothing's gonna change between May thirteenth and now. So having any emergency meeting, who's gonna do the agenda, you're gonna have the same issue. So I think I would recommend stay the course.
Okay. No, I'm not talking about having an emergency meeting, I was just saying, when we have the meeting, who's gonna do the agenda and the agenda packet? Because, you know, the packets have to be out at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. The council has to have those packets of everything that's on the agenda, so everybody will have, you know, be knowledgeable about what we're gonna meet, what's gonna be discussed. So nobody is blindsided with anything. Okay, that gives everybody time to go through, so we would know just as much as the next person. That is just my, that's just the question that I have, who's going to do it?
Like I said, I'm trying my best to get someone to help us get our package together. That's the only thing we can do. I don't think nobody is gonna, uh, hold us accountable of trying to get information together, so we can have our meeting. I mean, we still have five or fifth person, but we're gonna try to go on and move forward with it, until we get it done.
With respect, the attorney said the very same words to her.
So, anybody? Okay, can we make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
A second motion?
Okay, the, uh, it has been motioned second, that we adjourn this meeting. Any questions?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I understand.
I'm. I'm. We need a long time.
Seven.
Seven forty P M.
Do you need to also, before we adjourn, ask that there's any public comment? We do need to ask about public comment. I know that people spoke throughout, but.
Do we have any comments from the public?
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
The transition team, is this a team that has been officially appointed by the town council, and that is an official capacity, or just an unofficial capacity?
Um, unofficial. Hey, anybody? Not, let's go home.